So let's go ahead and move forward. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our invocation speaker who is joining us on Zoom. It is Mr. John Derling, who is representing Graham Church, who is united is to provide the invocation for the Perry City Council. Mr. Derling, I recognize you for the invocation.
Thank you that through the Lord Jesus, we are invited to bring to you our requests on behalf of the residents of Perry and of our leaders, the city council, and Mayor Hugalit, Superintendent Haven, and the Board of Education, our township and county officials, State Representative Frederick, and Senator Barrett, Governor Whitmer, our congressional delegation, President Trump, members of the judiciary, and those who will be elected to some of these positions on November 3rd. That you would protect them and direct them and prosper them in all of their deliberations and decisions for the formation of a more perfect union, the establishment of justice, the assurance of domestic tranquility, the provision for the common defense, the promotion of the general welfare, and for the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our posterity. Protect our men and women in uniform as they defend these blessings of liberty and enforce our just laws. May Perry continue to be a community where family and neighborhood bonds are strong, where children are educated for life and living, where churches minister to the spiritual needs of all, and where businesses prosper financially as they provide lawful and morally superior goods and services. Again, we ask for your blessing on city council tonight, that they would work hard on issues, but be easy on each other for the benefit of today's residents, our posterity, and always through means and two ends that would bring your pleasure and continued blessing. We ask this in the name of him whose kingdom of righteousness and peace we anticipate. Amen.
Mr. Derling, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Caroline, am I putting you under public comment or reports tonight?
Governor's words.
Well, I'm here to give a report.
Just an update.
Okay, so if you're reporting this, county clerk, we'll put you under reports. The benefit of that is there's no time limit on you, and they're allowed to engage you in questions. The time is now seven o'clock, and I will call to order this regular meeting in the Perry City Council. Would everyone please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone make the seat. For sake of Alex, I forgot to say the date. This is the regular meeting of the Perry City Council for Thursday, October 15, 2020. Devin, would you please call the roll?
Genevieve Katrell?
Here.
Craig Elliott?
Here.
Mindy Galbabi?
Here.
Adam Brass?
Christopher Powell?
Here.
Terry Wood?
Mayor Jane Hugalit?
Here.
All the county courts except council member Adam Brass and Terry Wood.
I found that the court is present, we may proceed with business. We will move first to the agenda. Clerk and I have prepared the agenda, and to the best of our knowledge, it has all matters that need to come before council for your attention tonight, and I submit it to you for your approval or your amendment.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Katrell, seconded by Elliott, that the agenda be adopted as presented. Is there any discussion on the agenda? If you're none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion clears. That will move us to reading and approval of the previous minutes. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the October 1 regular city council meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the readings, and approve the minutes from the October 1, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by Powell, seconded by Galbabi, that we suspend the rule of waive the reading and approve the minutes from the October 1, 2020 regular meeting. Any member of the council object to the reading of the minutes or the suspension of the rules? There are no objections to the suspension. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If you're none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion clears. That will move us to pre-approved reports and presentations. We have three individuals who work for the residents of the citizens of Perry here tonight to give us reports, and I'd like to recognize them at this time. We'll begin with our county commissioner, since he was here first, the Honorable John Flann. Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Caroline, I'm going to be an hour, I could like to go. I got the look, you know. Well, what I'll do is I'll start, first of all, with Perry activities. I'd like to say that I was really pleased this summer when the gravel Meadowdale subdivision, they raised the road, the gravel was outstanding, and the road is intact. It is really a very big improvement, so I'd just like to comment on that. Also, with the carrier of fire ambulance, the Cessna Alliance, we took delivery this summer of a 3,000 gallon tank wagon. We were very pleased with the quality and the fire truck, it took a year to get here. It weighs 56 tons when it's loaded. That's a lot of weight. Also, during this summer, we were approached by the city of Duran to take over ambulance service, and after we negotiated, and there was a bid process, they decided to go with the Cessna Alliance. So now, we are in Duran with our ambulance service as well as nine other jurisdictions. And that really helps. Again, that spreads the cost, helps keep costs down for all our ambulance charges and ambulance activities. We have a full crew. We've been very fortunate to be able to have hired paramedics, EMTs, and so on and so forth. They're quite hard to come by right now. Our fire department's doing quite well. I think it's almost fully manned, they train every month, and we're quite active. And our chief has been less since 2005, Guy Hubbard. I might add that he also chairs the 9/11 board for the county, and does an excellent job, so that's been... The COVID has put a lot more time into activities. To recognize that, we gave our paramedics and those who weren't part-time for us as paramedics, we gave them bonuses based on hours' work, and they were very appreciative, and it was well-received. We did get some stimulus money, so basically, that's pretty much what the stimulus money was used for, was the bonuses. Any questions on any of those activities, I certainly will try to answer them. Okay, let's move on to county, county activities. Let me say that we've been very, very satisfied, the Board of Commissioners and the county government, with our Pleasant View facility. They, of course, kind of been on lockdown because of the COVID, COVID, COVID pandemic. They've kept their cases to a minimum, they have not had a major outbreak, and they've been very good. Their head supervisor, I might add, of nurses, is Teresa DeLu, and she lives right here in town, she's married to Tyndale, so she does an excellent job along with the rest of the staff there. Our county health department has been very active. They work seven days a week since the outbreak started in March. They've been well-received. Anybody who's had COVID is contacted on a daily basis, and if you went to the hospital, if you couldn't be contacted, the supervisor of nursing, or the nurse, or the doctor was contacted to see how those patients were and how they're coming. So Larry Johnson, our health director, he's had a busy year. He looks a little tired, he finally got a haircut, and I told him he looked a little bothered, but anyway. If you have any questions on COVID, it's a very good source, call our county health department, they've got a lot of activity with that. County Board of Commissioners, we're a little concerned, of course, as we moved into April about funding. Funding is from the state and federal monies, especially for those departments who get a lot of funding from state and federal monies or grants. I'll use the example of our county health department, which is about 90-92% funded by state and federal monies. As it turned out, revenues, we were very afraid would dip, but revenues have not taken as big a hit as anticipated. Also, the SEV is raised, that's true. The value of property in Chialawsee County was about, I think it'll end up 5% or 6% this year, and next year, we anticipate an 8% increase in SEV. That's considerable. When you have $2 billion, 8% of $2 billion is a lot of money that would come to tax revenues for cities, villages, townships, and the county government. I also am the liaison to the road commission. The road commission finished up all their work. You know, they do a lot of work in conjunction with the 16 townships, and they got everything done and everything paid for, and they anticipate that their program, which was an eight-year program, and this was the fifth year, that they'll be able to complete year number six next year with all their projects. So when you're riding on those county roads, and they look pretty nice and good, they're right at it, and they've done an excellent job. Also, as I indicated earlier, we're a little concerned about monies for the county government, the stimulus packages. We received for general government approximately $550,000 from the federal stimulus package. Homeland Security, I believe their portion was about, I think it was $48,000, there's more money actually coming, we had to file another application for activities. And we've had some other stimulus money. I think the grand total will end up being about $750,000 by the end of the year for stimulus money to cover expenses that we did not expect to incur, or monies that we lost due to lost revenue. So we expect to finish the year at about what we anticipated, and we're pleased about that. And also, our budget process has been done, I had that up. I spent a lot of time with all the departments, we worked very closely with them. Our departments and all our groups and our elected officials worked at trying to reduce their budgets by 15%, and overall, we were successful. At the time, our budgetary process of August and September, we were still quite concerned about monies for next year. We're not quite as concerned, but everybody's going to work with a little less money to start. So I guess it's been a very different year, a very active year, and hopefully, we'll finish up on a good note, so everything will work out. Any services for next year, we're still going to maintain, most of our, we'll probably have all the services we had at the county government this year and next year, so we don't envision any cuts to the sheriff's department or road patrol, anything like that, so. Yeah. Any questions? I know it's a lot to absorb, if you ever had a question later on, you can call me anytime, so. If not, I'll sit down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Next, we have our community district library director, Jamie Carmel.
I'll let her go, because I know she's been... Everybody, she goes way more meetings than I live right down the road, so I'll give my thanks for her.
So then I'll recognize next our county clerk, the Honorable Carolyn Wilson.
Oh, thank you. It's good to be out and seeing people in actual person. I'm just, I'll give you an update, just what's been going on at the county level in the clerk's office. There's two different sides. Some people are not aware that there's a court side, and then there's the vital records that we deal with, elections and vital records, death, marriage, birth records. And so, on the court side, we are complying still with the Supreme Court ruling and our limitation on how many people are allowed in one location at one time. Because the court system is in a building that has other public offices in it, we, as department heads, have talked and we've come together to comply with those rules as well, just to kind of help security and how many people can be allowed in the building. So on the court side, they're allowed to have one person in at a time. If you were to come to the courthouse, you are being screened with a temperature, a few questions, and you need to sign in as to where you're going, but we are open to the public, normal hours, 8 to 5, no appointments, at least for my offices. We're back to functioning as normal as we can. We do require masks being worn in, and we often have the plexiglass and things like that. So the court side, they're pretty busy. Judge Stewart is a very busy, busy judge, and now that we're starting to start those trials back up, that has impacted our office greatly. Divorces are up, PPOs are up, something that COVID is not a friend to, so it's been interesting and unfortunate. And then, on the vitals side, one of the things that I need to make sure I'm telling everybody is about the CPLs, Certified Pistol Licenses. We have stopped the processing of those at 11:30 in the morning and at 4:30 in the afternoon because of the time restraints to allow for lunchtime and to get out, not that they do, but if you have a renewal to do, we're asking that you do it at the MSP.gov website. We're trying to do our part keeping people out of the building as much as possible. We do have some older people that just can't, don't have the computers or the technology skills to do that, so we do do the renewals, but mostly, we are doing new applications, and they're every day. Our highest number right now is 16, that's in one day, that's on top of everything else that we're doing, so it's been interesting. People want their guns, and the classes that are being taught throughout the county, it used to be certain locations would do it once a month, now they're doing it once a week, and they're filling them, so that is the big thing. Fingerprinting has changed. Hopefully, down the road, I'll be able to offer that service in my office as well, but right now, the sheriff's office does the fingerprinting, and it has been moved from the work release center to the sheriff's office, but you have to apply for that online. The scheduling goes every 20 minutes apart, they do it from 7:00 AM in the morning until like 9:00 or 10:00 at night, so their flexibility is great. We're not furloughing anymore. It was that staff furloughed by mandatory, then there was a voluntary, and now we're all back to work, so that's a good thing. That kind of hurt us. We've been in the office as far as the vital records, because elections are considered essential, and we all know how big of a year this has been. It's been very busy. I do have to give kudos to all of the local clerks that have been due diligent in getting prepared for what November of 2020 was going to look like and what we were trying to prepare for, our AV ballots, absent voter, or what people are calling the mail-in, the media is referencing it as early voting. We have tripled our numbers in our counting. Now, we don't know what that means for Election Day and what the precincts will look like, but I think we're anticipating the bigger scenario to be prepared for the masses, because there has been another push for registration of voting, which 183 proposal, 183 passed, same-day voter registration, and be able to vote, which is great. Every jurisdiction has to have someone allocated on a computer to do that function in the polls, but there's a slight window, 18 months, that people slipped through, and when you go to the secretary of state's to do a driver's license or something, current and now, you automatically are registered to vote, and prior, you had to select to be registered to vote, so they reversed it. So there's a window of all these people that weren't able to register to vote, and now there's been another push, and so two clerks told us today, one had 100 in her, we call it the inbox and the voter file through the bureau, and then another one had like 74. So she said, all these people are registering to vote, so we don't know if they're going to mail-in, drop off, come into the precinct, but we're prepared. I think we're prepared to, that's our ability. So we've been very proactive in anticipating what this year was going to look like. I think that is, PPE products are going to be at the locations. The Bureau of Elections is offering that to all jurisdictions in the state as long as the clerk requests it, because they did it for August, supply, and if you need more, then you need to call and you need to request that. I think that's about it. Anyone have any questions?
So did I understand you correctly? The same Michigan Supreme Court, who said that the governor can't by executive order require all the things she's requiring, and it said that they're going to require it of you, and that's no problem?
It's a requirement to work at the polls with a mask on, and that's another thing, sorry, I knew I was forgetting something. I'm doing training for election inspections. We did over 200 people in July, it's a two-year certification. Put it out there because clerks were saying we need more workers, because with the COVID, it affects a certain age group, that age group, and retirees usually work the elections, so we've been down with that, and I'm doing over another 100 in the next two weeks of classes for election workers. So, and wearing a mask is a requirement. They can't make anyone wear a mask, but they're saying it's a requirement.
I'm just disappointed in the Supreme Court that says, "Governor can't do this by executive fiat, but we can."
Well, the other thing is with this 14 days after the election, I met with my canvassers today to go over some certification of bags and what have you, and we were going through what the Bureau has put out as some processes for what the 14-day would look like, and it's about as confusing and clear as mud. We talked about different scenarios, because schedules have been put in place. Our dropdown deadline date is the November 17th in the evening. They said that it has, the canvas would have to be done, the final canvas would have to be done in the evening, but again, there's so many things happening with this situation that it could change. So I said, let's just keep our calendars open and be prepared to get together any time from now until the 17th of midnight. So that's what's going on at the county clerk's office.
Other questions for our county clerk?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Our elections are secure, that's the other thing. We are not attached to the internet on Election Day. The only thing that someone can do through the internet is register a voter, but that is the only thing. Our election is not even attached to any internet, so there's no, there's security things in place. I think it's pretty secure, and we have a very good system in place, and it bothers me that the media turns things into, set the course for what I feel is fear-mongering in any respect. It's leave the process alone. It is a very good process in Michigan. So, call if you have any questions, we're always available to help you or direct you and give you the tools to get your answers. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and I'm going to go home now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Our community district library director, Jamie Carmel.
Okay, got some things to pass out quickly. Everybody's going to get a library survey, and my board asked me to pass those out, because we want to hear from the community whether you use the library or you don't use the library. So, and of course, the annual report. Thank you. The survey is available online to take, but I was asked to pass out the paper ones to the boards. Every branch has a survey tablet, that we're asking patrons to fill out, follow there, and that's actually been pretty successful. It's going to be open for a month. We're trying to do a strategic plan, so this will help greatly with our strategic planning. I'm just going to hand one to any of those members who are not here. Yep. You got one, everybody got one?
On your survey, under gender, what's the other box called?
Well, not everybody identifies as male or female, they might identify as a third. There are several genders.
So, and the other?
Other, and that's however they identify.
What is it? Spartan?
Yep.
Oh, I can read out Spartan?
There we go.
So, I don't, I see we have a new member, or couple member, I don't think I've met you.
That's all right, I'll be leaving soonly.
Oh, you will be? Oh, you will be? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this one is...
Your lead has given us about 70 months of service filling in, and unfortunately, we couldn't convince her to run for another term.
Oh, okay.
So it's our loss to...
Good luck filling the position. But, so, let's see, so it's been quite a year, everybody's been through the same thing we have. I'm just going to go quickly through the highlights. We were really on track for a great year, starting in January all the way to March. We did close all of our library branches, we had to do that. We closed until June 8th, and we reopened as soon as we could. By then, we had all of our PPE in place, we had all of our physical sneeze barriers, and the staff was trained, and everybody had PPE. So we did reopen pretty early. There's still libraries statewide that are not reopened yet, so we had patrons who were thrilled to see us reopen. So we were down three months, and we had employees working from home when they could. I continued to go in the office here and there, but it was just an awkward and strange three months of not seeing our patrons. So we're happy to be reopened. We currently are not doing in-person programs, unfortunately, because, you know, there's the capacity limits, and a lot of our branches are really small, so you can't socially distance. So we really kind of pivoted over to a lot of virtual programming when possible. We put our tires on our reading program online, and we're recording our storytime. Ms. Joni, she's been recording virtual storytime, so we're trying to do our, offer our programs online. It's not the same as in-person, but we're doing the best we can with everything we have. A highlight also was that we passed our millage in August, so that was fantastic, because I didn't know what to expect. I mean, who would know that you'd have to have half a library millage during a pandemic? But district-wide, it was, I'd say about an average of 60% yes, which is pretty good. I was good with that. So we're good for another four years of stable funding. Another highlight is, we started the process to move our new low-fret branch. You may not be aware, but our new low-fret branch was located inside of an elementary school, because there wasn't a lot of buildings downtown. school, because there wasn't a lot of buildings downtown. So the township decided to lease a nice building downtown. And we started that process in January. Quarantine kind of pushed everything back, but we were able to reopen in July. So that's been a wonderful addition to the community. It's downtown, it's walkable. I'm not sure how that would have worked out with the kids in school, adding a public library in the school. So that couldn't have happened at a better time. Another highlight was, we replaced all of our staff and patron computers district-wide. We did that in November and December. We're going to update all the computers, all of the software. So we're good to go for at least another five years, I hope. We continue to add content to our digital historical collection. And I ask this at every municipal meeting that I go to, if you know any historical collections, like pictures, yearbooks, cemetery records, any of that, if you have any of that, we would like to borrow it and digitize it and add it to our online content. We have a lot of historical newspapers that go back to the eighteen hundreds. So just throwing that out there in case somebody is watching me on YouTube, if they have anything, we'd like to borrow it, we'll give it right back to you. So, and we have, we have all of the period, yearbooks, back to the early nineteen hundreds, and they're all searchable. So, so that's kind of a nice addition to the collection. We are also, we just are going to launch a library app on your phone, which will make it so much easier for people to request materials, find materials, look up library events, so that they don't have to go to our website, they just open the app. So we're, we have not marketed it yet, marketed it yet, but we're really excited and hope that kind of increases the use of the library's services especially. We did go find free also. So we've joined a growing list of libraries nationwide. We do not charge library fines anymore. That's kind of been something that's been happening probably for the last five years or so in libraries, because it kind of created a barrier for people who couldn't afford to pay their fines off, and they would just stop using the library. So we're going to see how it goes. And I think patrons are excited about it. We'll see how it goes and give it a year, and I think, I think it'll be okay. So, we received a couple grants. We received a technology and innovation grant through the Mid Eastern Michigan Library Cooperative for seven thousand dollars. And with that money, I think we're going to probably purchase a collection of wonder books, which are talking books, updated talking books, that you can plug in and recharge. I would have brought one with me because they are really, really cool. You know, not every child gets read too. So it's something where the child can sit down and read and, you know, go through the pages and kind of learn to read. They're easy readers all the way to Gmail age books. So I'm really excited about that addition. Because that's something we wouldn't have been able to purchase without the grant. Let's see. Here's my library report, the annual report with all the statistics. Like I said, we were on track, circulation, we were on track to, actually, I think, increase circulation from last year, after a gradual decline over the past several years. I think we would have probably increased it slightly from the year before. Our digital, the, the demand for digital is ever increasing. Of course, we have digital ebooks, movies, music, all of that. And that just continues to increase every year. So it's kind of hard to balance that. You want to purchase print materials, but also for digital materials, which people want more of. That's part of the reason for the survey, so we'll know where to put our money. These are just the numbers for our collection, the size of the collection. We balanced the budget last year, so all was well there. You go to the next page. These are just libraries like these statistics. We want to know how many people walk through our doors every year. And of course, it was lower because we were closed for three months. And I don't think that five thousand two hundred and sixty-three is correct, because it's fifty-two thousand, I'm missing a zero. But district-wide, we have fifty-two thousand, where we would normally have, the year before, I think we had like seventy-eight thousand. So, sorry I didn't correct that.
That was in library visit?
Library visits. Yep, it's people who walk through the doors. So there's seven branches.
So it needs a zero on there?
It needs a zero on there.
Thank you.
I know that I had two different copies, and I didn't bring the corrected one.
Nope, that's great, thanks.
Cardholders, I think, the year before that, we had about six thousand cardholders. So that tells me that we need to do some kind of marketing push to have people sign up for library cards, see, become users. So that's why I like these statistics, because I know, I see some deficits in here, or things that we need to do a little better. And of course, these are our library branches and our library board members. And then the last page is just a highlight, before we had to close, of all the things that we did in all of the branches. We had, we, you know, we had Mrs. Claus, we had Magic, we had all sorts of things going on. We didn't get to do those things over summer, but that's okay. I'm going to be hopeful that that will resume next summer. And that's all I get.
Any questions for our library director? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always nice to see you here again.
Thank you. And Mike was going to come, our library board member, but he had other obligations. Oh, and we're going to be hired for a library assistant also. Tony Moore is retiring at the end of December. So I did post that position, if anybody's interested, we'd love to have a library, we have, love to have a large pool of people to choose from, so.
Always going to leave some big shoes to fill.
Yes. People, people will miss Tony, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. That'll conclude our pre-approved reports, and that'll take us to public comment, because at this time during our meetings and under any other business may come for counsel, that we open up the time for members of the public to address the city council on any matter. We are allowing to, continuing to allow public comment. Those who participated in the meeting by Zoom, that governor's executive orders weren't necessary for us to allow that, since we have the infrastructure in place, I think I'd like to take a moment with it to make this more accessible. So would anybody from the public with us on Zoom like to address the council at this time? Devin, please let me know if there's any raised hands. Having no public comment on Zoom, would anybody here with us live like to address the council on any matter? I believe we have a gentleman who's here to address this regarding his zoning request?
Yes, sir.
This would be the time, would you like to address them?
Um, yes. My name is David Spitzley, and I'm applying to have the property of Zero North Washington rezoned from multifamily residential to agricultural residential. And I came today to answer any questions that you might have. I don't, I don't know how much information you already have, or, but you just gave a summary. A couple of years ago, I bought the property to grow shiitake mushrooms, to actually do research and development, to see if I could raise shiitake mushrooms. And after you inoculate, for this process, after you inoculate the lots, it takes about a year to find out whether you can actually produce the mushrooms. So in two thousand and nineteen, we started generating mushrooms, and we inoculated five hundred lots, and we were producing a lot of mushrooms. And so last year and this year, what we've been working on is trying to develop a process to make it efficient, so that we could cost effectively grow and sell these mushrooms. And during this process, what we've discovered is that we can grow mushrooms and we can do it profitably, but we need to make changes to the property in order to do that. And so I've talked with Leland, and I've talked with John, to try to figure out, John Sutter, to try to figure out how to make these changes. And our recommendation was first, to get a zoning change. And so that's why I've applied for the, for the change. And we went to the zoning meeting, passed through that, and then I just attended this meeting to answer any questions that you might want to know.
So Mr. Spitzley, I believe that you had made a request that we delay taking action while you checked into some concerns. Are you here to tell us tonight that you would like to proceed with the rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Yeah, I met John, and he laid out a good plan, as consistently as Leland had mentioned before also. And I think the idea is to create a site plan and then resubmit it. And, but I, I think that there's a path forward.
So, thank you, Mr. Spitzley. If Mr. Spitzley can stay with us and council wants to ask him questions when we get to that under business, he'll be available to answer any of those questions. Did you have anything else to tell us at this time, Mr. Spitzley? Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to address the council at this time? Seeing no other public comment, we'll move to communications. Devin, do you have any communications for council?
I do. I just want to make sure that council received correspondence from Assistant Attorney Thomas Bridges regarding North Street. If you cannot find it, or do not believe you've got it, please let me know. I also have an email from Adam Brass. Subject is SADA resignation. Counsel, I am thankful for the opportunity you have served on the SADA board. It has been great experience. However, my schedule does not allow me to represent the city adequately, because the city deserves excellent representation with its essential service provided to our citizen. I am resigning effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Best wishes to whoever, whoever shall select to fill this seat. Adam.
So we'll put the resignation from Adam in front of council and seek your acceptance tonight. I'm going to telegraph what my intention is on this, so council has an opportunity to think about it. I plan to put mayor's appointments on the next agenda, and my intention is to, effective December one, appoint myself to the SADA board. It's an unpaid position. I've served in there in the past, and maybe in the mayor's office, I'll have some more time to do it. If council has time to think about that, has any objections or recommendations that there might be somebody better suited, I'd certainly be interested to hear that. And since I'm appointing myself, I want to telegraph moves, so you guys have a chance to think about it and comment on it if you wish.
I think that we accept the registration of Adam Brass as a city representative on the SADA board.
We have that under business. We have that under business.
Oh, okay, that's on my, my, oh, that's, sorry.
That's okay. Did you have the reports, or communications done?
Yes. Tuesday, October thirteenth, I received an email from Assistant Attorney Thomas Bridges, and it's in regards to the current Supreme Court ruling about the governor's orders for emergency powers authority. His concern is that the Open Meetings Act, of course, that is not into effect, and with our virtual meetings, that the virtual meetings that were done by vote would not count. So he has created a resolution to cover those meetings that you had as a virtual vote. And so that can be done under any other business, if you would like. And so you should have a paper copy of that, that was not in your agenda packet. That should have been set up separately on a pile that you had had. Also, two other items, I've been watching three items, and you all probably have two. One, which we just discussed, the Open Meetings Act. It appears to be really close to just needing the governor's signed. The next item of business that I gave you a packet of, which I shall not read, because I believe it's twenty pages, but for your time, I gave you correspondence, and this is from the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. And these are the emergency rules that they have set in place. And then another rule has come into place since I gave you your agenda packet, and that's also, I'm sorry, MIOSA is the new one. So, I'm sorry. The first one that you did get in your packet is from the Department of Health and Human Services, which covers a lot of the governor's original orders through COVID. And the new one that came through was through MIOSA. They now have their rules to apply. And again, both are quite lengthy, but I thought as a correspondence, it was important to get you guys copies, if you hadn't heard about it already. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Any questions? Thank you, Devin. That will move us to mayor's reports. I don't really have any particular report. I did send the report to the city council when the Michigan Supreme Court made its decision. The primary effect of their decision for us directly has been an inability for members of the council to participate in meetings through remote means. We're expecting that's going to get corrected, because I understand the legislature has passed an amendment to the Open Meeting Act that will allow you to return to being at meetings by Zoom, and we're waiting on the governor to sign it into law. But at this time, we're not able to allow any council members to participate by Zoom. My intention is, if it goes the way I expect, to continue the practice that we've developed over the last few months. But I do appreciate that council members have taken the opportunity to come here and have the meetings live. I really like working with you guys when we can all be here together. And I appreciate you guys making the effort, putting on the masks, coming in here, and making the sacrifice to come and do the jobs. I think it's been a real benefit. Is there anything that council members have questions for me on? Very good. That'll conclude then my report. Do council members have any committee reports they'd like to address? Seeing no committee reports, we'll move to presentation and approval of the bills. Council has had an opportunity to review the bills. We seek your permission to pay the meeting.
I move that we approved the bill as presented and authorized payment.
Second.
Move by the trial secretary, Elliot, that we approved the bills as presented and authorized payment. Is there a discussion? There are none? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will take us to old business. We have a discussion, possible amendment of council rules and procedures. Neither of our advocates are here for that tonight. What would council like to do with this?
Table it?
We should.
Do you want to table it, or leave it no action taken?
No action.
No action taken.
Very good. Any objections? We will leave it no action taken, and carry it to the first committee meeting in November. That will move us to possible resolution to adopt water and sewer rates. We've been working on this a long time, and John and Devin have worked out the motions and implement the recommendations from the Michigan Rural Development. And so you have those before you tonight. We're going to seek council's adoption of these recommended rates, which will help to get our water, and water funding in compliance with its bottom covenant. John, did you want to report to council on this?
Sure. I wasn't here for what Leo briefed you guys on, but it's pretty much included in the resolution, the recommendations to raise some of the ready-to-serve rates, predominantly in meter sizes over the standard residential of five-eighths or three-quarter inch. So one inch and above incrementally goes up, and it was at my request to break it out over five years for that. Um, the, uh, per thousand gallon rate goes up, uh, like seven, eight cents a year. And then the, uh, benefit charges and likewise for inside the city and outside the city. There is, um, uh, a sewer will, will increase, um, by a multiplier, I think that was 1.025. And then after 2025, everything will increase automatically. It's just built into the resolution so that I don't have to keep coming back or whoever and, uh, pleading the case to, to have a small increase. And I think that ended up being like a two and a half percent, which was recommended by, uh, our cap.
So the change is instead of a yearly vote to change the rates, it'll be automated. A council who doesn't want to update the rates will have to vote not to do so. Anything else, John?
Nope, I think that's, uh, you know, it met the conditions, uh, what Leo briefed on for the rate study initially from USDA loans. Uh, we will be coming out of a couple of, uh, bonds. I think it's 2022, maybe somewhere in there. I want to say 30, 40,000. It'll free up at, at that time, so.
Thirty, forty thousand a year?
Yes.
And do you guys want to be able to get a project and go fix the pipes over there on Horace Street?
Great.
And, and Madison Street, too.
It's where Madison is. So we need a motion, yes?
Yes, is there discussion of the rates or are we ready for motion?
I just have some clarification questions for myself. So you've mentioned the different sizes of, uh, of piping, uh, five eighths, two quarters, one inch. Um, how much of the city residents are, are, are most of them five eighths, three quarters or?
Yeah, so predominantly, we're going to have, I think, about 700. Let's, if I said 740.
You don't have to be that precise, the 700-ish.
Yeah, are going to be residential, then the others go into commercial sized.
Okay, so one and above is more commercial.
Yeah, okay.
Per 1,000 gallon rate, is that, so is that the 2.99 there for 2021? Forgive me, is that how much it is per 1,000 gallons or?
For, yep, so you have your, you're ready to serve or your base rate, whether you use any water or not.
Okay.
And then every 1,000 gallons that the meter reads, it's $2.99.
More.
More.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Do you know what the average usage is for our residential home in here? Just out of curiosity, if you don't want to.
I think everything all in is based on, you know, there's models, so roughly two cup, uh, a couple in a home is about 4,000 gallons.
Per year?
Per month.
Per month.
Okay.
Isn't that crazy?
I know, I just.
You know, when they, when they, when an engineer designs a model, they use, I think it's 80, 81 gallons a day per person in a, in a residence, somewhere around there. It, it was higher, they changed it, you know, more efficient showerheads, toilets, closets, so.
Thank you.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution as presented, which establishes water and sewer rates for January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Move by Elliott, second by Katrelle. Read it again for me. I don't have the, we need one second. Craig, would you give me that again?
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution as presented, which establishes water and sewer rates for January 1st, 2021.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. The motion carries. This will move us to discussion, possible approval regarding city Christmas party and Christmas fantasy. I have, uh, some additional information to update council regarding the Christmas fantasy. I asked, um, our events coordinator, Dory Bortman, to conduct a survey of the individuals who participate in the Christmas fantasy event. She did so by email. Uh, we have a summary of the response. We had four who indicated, yes, they would like to do that and participate, 10 who said, no, they would not participate. One teacher who said that the students would paint the windows no matter what we decide to do. And 26 of those surveyed did not respond. Uh, since having, uh, participation in the Christmas fantasy event is pretty important. If businesses don't want to do it, there's no reason to go forward with it. So I wanted to get council a report on what, what we got to complete downtown.
So is that saying that half didn't respond? Is that, we saw 20, you sound like 10, 10.
26 that did not respond, four that said, yes, they would like to do so, 10 that said, no, we will not participate. So you've got 14 responses and 26 non-responses.
And 36 that are either no or didn't answer, and only four answered yes.
Can I speak for Dory? She brought up a couple of subjects. One is Christmas fantasy has its own, um, event, of course, um, wrapped around the businesses. And I know that's part of the decision that was made. Um, she's, she asked me to mention though that the city, whether it was Christmas fantasy or not, did, um, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. And so whether in your decision, if you make a decision tonight, um, would that be a separate issue or not? Um, and then she also said that, um, Santa Claus has mailboxes. And if council was willing, because again, that would be a, a friendly on their own, that that could be something that could be put up, kind of like the kids doing the windows. Um, we could have the spirit if you do decide not to do an event is, is that. I just wanted to share that. That was just kind of office talk. And she just kind of looked at me and I'm like, okay, I'll say something.
So if, if you guys want more response, if Dory did put the timeframe on the response and the deadline passed, if council wants more input, I would ask Dory to reach out to the 26 who didn't respond and see if you can get a response that, uh, will help you get a more complete survey or if you feel like you've got enough information to make some decisions.
Did, did Dory mention anything about, um, the McQueen House going in on the level with her?
Meaning what? That's where Santa, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus are in.
Are going to be there.
And so I don't believe she has approached them to see if they would welcome that yet. Um, only because she knew it was on the table to even have the whole event. So I can't speak for her whether she's talked to them directly, but that has always been, um, I shouldn't say that. It's went back and forth. But since Christmas fantasy has been created, the McQueen House has been one of the highlights of that evening. Um, and that's where Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus has been. So would you like me to follow up and to see if she's contacted them at all?
If we can get in with the McQueen House and, and maybe share costs.
There isn't any cost to the McQueen House.
But we pay Mr. and, Mr. and Mrs. Santa, or Miss Santa, Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
That's a city function.
But can you budget it to that?
Yes.
Okay.
But can that even be done and still follow the guidelines of the Department?
If we're talking frankly, we've had a, we've had an office conversation. There could, um, and there's nothing definite. She's been in a communication with Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus and they are very comfortable to work with the public. Um, so they are just waiting for Dory to say yes or no. Um, and then her and I just were throwing ideas. Probably a sneeze guard would need to be put in place and they would not have the, uh, the distancing would have to be put into place. But again, the McQueen House is quite tight and for the amount of traffic, you know. It would have to be a discussion, but we've had a rough discussion about it that, um, that there just might not be the pictures that is typically, you know, that they get when they go there from Dory and, um, but, uh, but they are willing to, to come and, uh, to make it comfortable and friendly. That was, that was a couple of options that we kind of talked about, her and I. And I don't know if that's right or wrong. I'm just saying we've, we've been trying to talk so that we, we weren't starting totally from scratch if, if council decided to go ahead and, and move forward with a holiday spirit of some sort, so.
I'd like to, no one can take until the next meeting, so we have Dory, see what she finds out from the, what was it? The whole Historical Society or is it just the, is it Billy?
We would direct the question through their president and allow him to consult with Historical Society, give us the answer. That would be the typical.
I guess I'm wondering what, what is your question, though?
Oh.
Because this is, let me explain what, what we do with the McQueen House. She usually gets with Nancy, which she is part of the Historical Society. And we coordinate, um, that it's going to be open. And Nancy works with Dory to get the doors open and the chair ready for Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. If they have the product, the Historical Society will do their wreaths and do their wreath sale during that week. And, um, we have had some entertainment and we've had some, um, uh, authors in there signing books and, and doing reading in there. So, um, no cost, it's just more of a coordinating time. And it's always, the only cost, of course, is, um, the time to bring in Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. So do you want more from them? I mean, so part of me says is we have a great coordination as it is. The only thing on the table is the COVID restrictions and being safe is, is what's on the table. Unless there's something else that you want from me.
I guess there isn't.
That's why I want to make sure that you knew what we did. We do this, we coordinate with them every year. And it works wonderful. They're very helpful and, and the community loves it. Department of Public Works, they decorate.
And you said the Santa mailbox?
The Santa mailboxes is something that council approved. It was an extra last year and, um, it, that is something that we do as, um, there's a few elf helpers that correspond with that. And, uh, last year it got put up near the library is what it did. And it was very nice and, um, offers the kids an opportunity to tell their wishes for Christmas. And there's no manning that. There, there would be just simple dropping it. And then again, that's something Dory has coordinated with a couple of people that were willing to help her out in the correspondence.
And, and you guys can piecemeal this. You can do the Santa mailbox and, uh, not have Mr. and Mrs. Claus. If that's the direction you want to go. I do have some concerns about bringing Mr. and Mrs. Claus in. If we're not going to have the event, I'm not sure we're going to draw the traffic. Is, is expenditure of that money actually going to serve the community? Are parents going to bring their kids out in this situation just to see Mr. and Mrs. Claus?
How much do we have for, to pay Santa, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Claus for their appearance?
You know that off the top of your head, then and I don't.
And I guess it, it doesn't matter the dollar.
Either $200 or $400. I know that's rough, but I don't have the budget in front of me to tell you exact, but it's, it's.
It, it's just something to think about, but if, if we don't spend that money because of the COVID, um, I would like maybe to get a, a, a group together and purchase with that money, buy some, um, Christmas trees to hand out to some families and perry them really hurting. And I know there's a lot of them. Is that something that they? Because it doesn't help everybody in the city. Is that something that can be done by the council?
No.
It cannot be.
It has to be a community event.
Okay.
So we would have to have 800 trees available so everybody could possibly get a tree. And I'm being dramatic, Chris, but.
Right, I did, yeah, I see what you're saying.
That's my, every time when we went to the city attorney about any spending of funds, it's, um, we can spend it on the event because we're opening the door for anybody to come in. That's what allows us to use, use that money. Great cause.
I'm concerned based on the response from the business people, how many are going to be willing, um, to work really hard to be open and do what's necessary to keep social distance and like that. If, if they're not up for that, I think we've got no choice but to keep it very minimal.
We under, we totally understand. We're, we're trying to, to use our head.
Because somebody else might want them. So we need to try to make a decision to let Santa and Mrs. Claus know that we will or we won't need them on, uh, for opinion.
That is true.
So they can make other arrangements. So I don't know. I don't know.
Well, that's why I brought this up so early. I expected it would take some discussion and gathering of information. So, do you guys want some more information before you deal with this?
I don't need any more.
Are there any motions?
I move that we, uh, we cancel the city's community event, Christmas Fantasy, for December 12th, 2020.
Second.
Move by Katrelle, seconded by Elliott to cancel the, uh, city Christmas fantasy event scheduled for December 12th, 2020. Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Uh, regarding the city Christmas party, we have not explored getting catering. We're waiting for a little council, uh, from, a little, uh, input from council. Do you want to cancel the city Christmas party or do you want me to gather more information and see if it's possible to do? That would be a, an employees-only event. Volunteers, it would be an invite. So no one would have to come. They would come at their own option. Whether or not you guys want to do that up here on the third floor or not is the question that I want to put forward.
It, it's a lot of fun, I think. I, I'd like to do it again.
Do you know how many people?
Would I need like this? Because I'm not hoping on to be the way if I'm not.
30 to 40. And if you are following the rules that are in place, but they're only temporary, we're allowed 28 up here.
I think you could count on the turnout.
I would say, I would say we're, we're usually, that's about what it is.
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question, Chris, because I haven't left office yet. So I haven't seen if the invitation is going to show up from the.
Yeah, no, no.
I would just stand out the door and look pitiful.
My first on third floor.
My personal intention as I leave office, out of respect for the new mayor, the last thing a new mayor needs is the old mayor sticking his nose in everything. I intend to back off and give space for Mayor Hammond once she's elected. I think she's going to be elected because she's the only one on the ballot, um, to, to become the mayor in her own right. I wouldn't come because I believe I can give her some space to take her place.
I, I think you could pull this off, given the space and you'd like to say maybe not as many people will be showing up. But if you have an RSVP, you know, ahead of time, um.
Yeah, the RSVP is never exact, but it always, um, like anything, you probably had the same experience. Yeah, yeah, RSVP is never exact, but it always, um, like anything, you probably had the same experience. It always bounces off, people said they were coming, don't, and then people that didn't, you know, it bounces back, it's still about the same number.
Yeah, or e- even, um, I know you're still looking at catering options for us.
So that is the only thing that we did bounce off in our office, is that we have not pursued that. We don't know if anybody will touch us to cater.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, or is there an option, I, I mean, it wouldn't be as jovial or convivial, like, to do like a, a box sort of lunch or something that's prepackaged, so that, you know, people aren't eating from a communal bowl of Jell-O.
We would definitely research it, but again, no work has been done, we've just had in-office conversation, but that was one of the things is even if we wanted to do it, we don't know if anybody would cater for us, so.
We're kinda waiting to see if council is willing to just cancel this or if you're inclined to pursue it and authorize it and admire it, we'll have the staff work on it.
Can I ask another question? What would be the possibility of changing the name of it from Christmas Party to Winter Party? For those that don't, like myself, that don't celebrate Christmas.
It's an employee get-together, yeah, there, this, there's nothing in writing. So if, if you make the motion or something, if you wanna change the name, there's nothing intentional in it.
Chris and Craig's Barbecue, pardon, alright?
I like it.
All former and current city councilmen and mayors are invited.
Councilwomen, councilwoman, councilperson.
Sorry, councilpersons.
Or if you're at the library, it's other.
Oh, yeah, others.
There, there, there will be no need to send me an invitation, I need to step back to the new mayor and opportunity to take her place.
It's still like an invitation.
Could, could I, could I make a motion to say this? That we request that the staff look to see if a caterer is available, what are catering options are? Without saying yes or no?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We don't need a motion to do that, we'll just give that a council request.
Yeah, that, that, that is so fair to say.
How's that? Yeah, let's see if we can even pull it off to a caterer.
I hope you respect that we have not done the work, cause it was like, everything was pointing to keep things shut down, it was like, why do all of the research on it and then.
Makes perfect sense.
I tend to feel that we just need to be sad this year.
Would it, would it be okay to, do I have to make a motion to change it to Winter Party or something like that?
Yeah, make motion, I'll second it.
So I have to do that?
It doesn't have an official.
I don't wanna make it unofficial.
I just want to say it again.
What?
It really, it's not, it, there is no real name on it, it's, it's typical because we, we, we give gifts and it's typically this season.
Uh, I'll, I'll be looking for a council motion to say go ahead or not. So when that motion comes up, be sure to be here and, and be sure you ran the motion. Or if somebody else runs it before you, then try to amend their motion.
I'll, I'll go, I'll go ahead. I know that we plan a city winter party for December and authorize Shirley Smith to coordinate this and seek out further information on whether we can get catering or what to do with food. Like, do I do that right?
Pretty darn close.
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved by Elliott, seconded by Catrelle, to, um, to, uh,
To plan the city Christmas party.
Authorize the city, the city to hold a winter party, employee gathering, um, on the first Friday in December. And authorize, uh, utility clerk Shirley Smith to pursue catering options. Is that fair enough?
Excellent.
You gotta make me repeat that, Devon, we're in trouble.
What about gifts? That they do the.
Way the elephant or something? That could be racist, they'd be doing elephant swat.
We can do a, a kind gift exchange.
We could just cancel any kind of, we just have dinner, we, we just won't do anything else, it, it's fine. That, that is fine. I mean, I, I, I'm not out to offend everybody, we try to come up as employees, some creative, fun, different things, and that was one of them, and it isn't necessary, it's fine.
Well, and maybe if they, you know, and this is not to say the same goes, but if catering is a bust, but people still wanna get together, there's always just an opportunity to have beverages, punch and cookies together or something like that, it's not as the same, but it could still be a gathering, but I think it's, it's worth it for you to pursue what it could look like.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, thank you for doing that, thank you.
But yeah, the event would just be a dinner from this time forward.
Can we have happy hour up here?
Can we?
I, I mean.
Make a motion.
Make your motion.
Turn that off for a minute.
No.
You cannot breathe, okay.
We have a social hour, we've done that, so that people can come in and talk before dinner is ready.
That is always very B O, B O Y D.
Yeah, true. Bring your own biscuit.
So do you have the motion okay, Devon?
I can, I can, everybody.
Who's got the report?
Look, look at next meeting to make sure I got it, but I got it close enough.
Sounds good.
Is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Can you say the motion again? I can't remember what you're asking.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Catrelle, that we approve a winter employee party for the first party in December, mayor added that, and authorize Shirley Smith to coordinate the same and, and ask whether the, where the catering would be possible. I'd have to listen to you guys' words, but anyways, I got the gist of all of it. Is that close enough? If you were to do it again, then it's you.
Further discussion?
None.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no.
No.
We have no vote, that requires a roll call. Councilwoman Gellwabe?
No.
Councilman Powell?
Oh, yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Catrelle?
Yes.
I'm gonna let me break a tie. Motion passes.
But, valid.
That will move us to possible adoption of rezoning resolution.
This is a quick one. Do we have the three votes, do we have enough, are you able to?
You're not spending money? You're authorizing this to go forward, you'll have to approve the catering, and because the catering spends money, that will require a fourth one. So possible adoption of rezoning resolution. Spitzley is here tonight, he's asking us to proceed. What's council's pleasure on this? And as I said, Mr. Spitzley has remained with us, so if you have questions for him, he's available for you to ask those questions.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution as presented, which adopts the rezoning of vacant land on Washington Street from our multifamily district to A-one agricultural residential.
Second. Bring in business.
By here, Ford.
Mindy.
My motion is longer than that.
You're gonna make me cry, but.
Well, I'm sorry.
According to Bridges, they do not have to read a formal resolution, but the resolution must come in minutes. So you have a similar look of what I have for the minutes.
Just makes it harder for me to repeat the motion.
Alright, you want that?
Go ahead and repeat it again.
Elliott, seconded by Catrelle, to, yeah, can I borrow that?
Yes.
You can have on a date as I have.
I, I like to be creative, but not that creative. Moved by Elliott, seconded by Catrelle, that we accept the, and adopt the resolution as presented, which adopts and the rezoning of vacant land on Washington Street from our M multifamily district to A-one agricultural residential, is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. You're all set then, Mr. Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzley, thanks.
Thank you, you're welcome to stay with us, and you're welcome to leave at any time you wish.
Have a quick question.
Yes, correct.
Did we do anything with the possible amendment of council rules and procedures?
It was, uh, with no action taken.
Did I miss that?
That was the very first thing that we know, Mr. Powell asked for no action taken, I heard some of the voices approve it, and I asked if there was any objection.
Is, oh, is, is this on the sanctuary city thing, is that what we were talking about?
No, um, the Second Amendment sanctuary proposal was withdrawn at the last meeting.
That's what I thought was.
I believe that there was a vote to table it indefinitely.
Correct.
Yep.
This was for.
Is this what Adam also was involved in?
This was Adam and Terry's.
That's, I, I mixed up those two things, sorry, I apologize.
I'm excited to have a new mushroom business in Perry.
Yeah.
Yes.
We've got, we have a ice cream store shaped like an ice cream cone. How can you beat that? Get an obdick mushroom building or?
I thought maybe you were gonna ask if you could make like mushroom bites.
There we go, shut. We can that's right back.
Are there, are there sweets that you can make out of mushrooms?
I'm enthusiastic about chocolate-covered mushrooms, I'm not sure they taste.
They do call chocolate.
Yeah, I've tried it, there's all kinds of mushrooms out there. Here, take a wrong one, geez.
Are you gonna do a little bit of well as shiitakes, are you gonna grow chocolate truffles too?
He's starting hard doing, aren't you?
I know, I know.
But I wish I could find truffles.
Yes.
Is council prepared for new business?
You bet.
Yes.
New business then. Possible acceptance of resignations, we have two possible resignations to be accepted. Mr. Bridges' resignation as the city's assistant city attorney, effective December thirty-one, twenty twenty. And, uh, Mr. Grass's resignation from the SADA.
Our move that we accept the resignation of Thomas Bridges as the city's assistant attorney, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty, with regret. And, could this be the same motion, do we need two motions?
Yes.
Okay, and also move that we accept the resignation of Adam Grass as the city's representative on the SADA board with regret.
I second that.
Moved by Catrelle, seconded by Powell, that we accept Thomas Bridges' resignation as the assistant city attorney, effective December thirty-one, twenty twenty. And we accept the resignation of Adam Grass as the city's representative of the SADA board with, effective immediately with regret. Is that satisfactory?
So with his resignation as, as right now, that we don't have a representative until after December.
We do, we do, we have two representatives.
Okay.
Our clerk doesn't remember, is our other representative.
Okay. Thank you, Devon.
You're welcome.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will move us to possible adoption of ordinance amendment number three fifty, which we read at our last meeting, how would council like to proceed?
Um, I move that ordinance number three fifty, which amends planning commission's procedures and which was read at the October first regular council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catrelle, seconded by Elliott, that ordinance number three fifty, which amends planning commission's procedures and which was read at the October first regular council meeting, be adopted. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That'll take us discussion of possible consideration to vacate parts of North Street. As council had an opportunity to review the assistant city attorney's advice, how would you like to proceed?
Hey, look at really. Like if he really wants to do it, it's gonna be really screwball to get it done, isn't it?
Yeah, we, we can vacate it, but he's not gonna come out of it doing what he wants to do, if we want more. My, my suggestion to council would be not to vacate the street at this time, it won't accomplish a goal. If he wants to pursue it further, he can always come back to council with a plan to resolve the issue for up here and see, and having it vacated at that time. But in this case, you're effectively passing the property to somebody who hasn't asked for it to be vacated.
That's true.
So is it basically tabling this for, to?
I would suggest tabling it to remove it from your agenda. And then we'll communicate to him that, uh, he, he won't receive the land if we vacate it, so he's gonna have to do some work if he wants to pursue it.
Okay.
That, that council just said because of this, we're, we're exceeding reason. We would, since it doesn't accomplish his purpose, but you're not saying we wouldn't consider it if he can work another property.
We're not doing anything, we're leaving it as is, we don't need a motion, do we?
We would need a motion to table it, um, things won't come off your agenda until we resolve. If you decide not to resolve them, then you can table them indefinitely or to re-assert them.
Okay, um, I move that we table the discussion of abandonment of the North Street property.
Second.
Moved by Catrelle, seconded by Elliott, that we table indefinitely, discussion of possible consider, or consideration of vacant, vacant parts of North Street, is that satisfactory? You got that okay, Devon? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. You're all set, thank you. Our final item of new business is possible renewal of liability and property insurance. Devon, did you have a report you wanted to give on this before they take it up?
Hmm, wow, new faces. Um, we have been, obviously, I, we have been with MML since, I know of, since two thousand seven, cause that's the report that I have in front of you, just to see how, um, how much of the difference that has, that it has caused us to have this company. It is comparable to, um, the Michigan Township Association, which is like MML. Um, I recommend that we keep them, they do a good job, and I present to you the figures. I told Joanne to, when she'd asked me what to consider, and we've been doing a five percent increase. Um, so the item before you of the proposal that they had given us is four point five percent. And hopefully you had the time to read the report from Diane Jones. And if you have any questions with that, I can try to answer some of them.
We're happy with them and they're easy to do, we have a ton of issues.
I haven't had any issues, we had one company come in and they were, um, that was two, maybe three years ago. And they said that, you know, there might be some variables, um, but we'll probably come pretty close when it comes to cost. Uh, the biggest thing is it's a full, when you change your liability and property pools, it's a, almost a full in-depth audit, I mean, you have to go through everything when you go through a different company. And so when he told me that, um, I'm uncomfortable with that, I don't know. Their legal is good, they're, you know, anytime we ask them, they're available. Uh, work with comp, everything, they're, they're there for us.
I need to know what a boat holder is.
Well, we do have a boat at the lagoon.
Really?
Mm-hmm. It's a little, you know, like a rowboat size type of deal, but sometimes I have to get out in those lagoons.
Okay.
It was available for council members, if anybody wanted.
I wouldn't take it as a romantic dive, you know.
Okay, um, I move that we approve payment of the city insurance renewal to MML liability and property pool in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and authorize the clerk to sign the agreement.
Support.
Moved by Catrelle, seconded by Powell, that we approve the payment of the city insurance renewal to MML liability and property pool in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and authorize clerk to sign the agreement. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will take us to, any other business may come before council. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter. I'll turn first to those who are with us on Twitter, is there any member of the public on, I'm not saying that Twitter, on Zoom who would like to address the council at this time? Devon, let me know if there's any raised hands. Devin, let me know if there's any raised hands. Would anybody from the public present with us tonight like to address the council on any matter? Seeing no public comment, I have one item for the city council. If you had a chance to review the recommendation for a resolution, this is becoming a common practice because the open governor's order, which allowed us to have our meetings through Zoom, be careful not to call it Twitter, through Zoom, has been overturned by the Michigan Supreme Court. There is a risk that under litigation, city action approved in a meeting where votes were done by Zoom could be challenged as invalid. In order to protect against that, we have a resolution asking that council affirm all the actions you've taken over the past several months based on your votes on Zoom. So effectively, we have the argument that if the court agrees that it was invalid when we did it, it's valid based on your vote to no.
I move that the following resolution be adopted. Whereas the Perry City Council has conducted numerous remote access meetings since April 15, 2020, under the authority of executive orders issued by Governor Whitmer. And whereas the said orders were issued under apparent legal authority and contained provisions for compliance with temporary suspension of the Michigan Civil Rights Act. And whereas the Michigan Supreme Court has recently issued an opinion denying the governor's emergency powers authority, but did not invalidate such remote access meetings. The opinion, however, has created a cloud on OMA actions taken in reliance on the governor's orders. Therefore, it is resolved that Perry City Council hereby ratifies each and every action taken by the council on April 15, 2020, and each and every action taken since then at all council meetings held since April 15, 2020, without any change in individual council members' vote up to this date.
I'll second.
Moved by Elliot, seconded by Galvine, to approve the resolution as just read. Is there discussion? Hearing none.
Do you know of any other, any other cities and municipalities that are doing this?
Mr. Bridges advises me that he had obtained this from other municipalities.
Everyone's already talked about it.
Since Michigan Supreme Court has not, Governor Haley has authorized remote access meetings. Many cities are adopting a resolution ratifying all actions taken at their remote access meetings to eliminate any argument that the actions are void. I have attached the resolution to that effect just to be clear. So he didn't give us names.
But yes, they are.
Is there other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries unanimously. Do members of council have any other items of business that need to come before you to your consideration tonight? Hearing none.
I got one extra thing. I had a thought, and I had solid it at the moment, but I thought, mentioned it and see what everybody thinks, of the possibility of seeing if we can get like a Bluetooth speaker or something to hook up to Devin's laptop where anybody that's on Zoom could be heard live. I was thinking of it during the invocations and the fact that we all have to get on our phones and nobody in the audience can hear anything either. That that way, those in the audience could actually hear someone was speaking and saying something that the council's supposed to be heard, that everybody would be able to hear it.
I don't know how we would deal with feedback.
That's my only, sorry, say it again, I'm sorry.
I don't know how we would deal with feedback.
That's what I was, that was the only thing I was thinking of too.
When we began, I was using Zoom on my tablet. When we'd get a few people in the room and Zoom, they would feed back against the mayor. If it was just me and Alex in the room, it would get, the result would be feedback. And so as a result, that's why I'm teaming this up.
Yeah, I understand that.
Devin?
If we continue in this format, I guess it would be a decision with mayor and council whether it would just be another live option, but the communication just would not be available. That would be the only thing. And that way, you wouldn't have to worry about having somebody joining by Zoom. It would just be showing that we would have a live meeting would be one other option. But I'm assuming that the governor's gonna sign this and we will have the capability of continuing, of doing virtual meetings. But again, if you're all meeting here, it doesn't demand you to do a remote meeting. It's just been a nice added feature for your public.
I was thinking if, and I need to think on this a little bit more. As I said, I was just thinking about this today. If we only had one device in here and we made sure that people that are not speaking are on mute, I think that would maybe the feedback.
I think you're asking for a Bluetooth to go against what she's doing and you still might have the feedback.
Are you saying it's her?
But what I could do, yeah, because that is our microphone.
Oh, I mean, is it?
So what I could do is I could get ahold of Dennis and we could do a dummy meeting together, just have, you know, maybe Mike Shirley or Derry up or something in that order and cause some conversation, use the phone and try it. I mean, I'm not against the idea of having a Bluetooth speaker so that it could do that. But I do have to agree with the mayor that I don't know if we, if we wouldn't have that feedback.
I mean, it causes a lot of feedback. That's not it.
But that's how Dennis and I got to where we are today with this. Is we did, we did some dummy meetings to figure this out.
I was just thinking,
All we can do is try.
Benefit of, since we are doing this consistently and having most people here, that if we were able to do that, it would make it easier on everybody to hear and see if anybody has it.
So Devin, could you have the discussion with Mr. Malloy and maybe see if there's a possibility in what the cost of the hardware needed to be? And report back at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Will that do?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other items of business that need to come for your attention tonight? And we'll move to council discussions and observations. Councilwoman Galvine? Councilman Powell?
No.
Mayor Proton Petrelle?
I have a Bluetooth speaker. If you would like me to bring it over and you can try it. And if it works, we can keep it here.
Thank you. Councilman Elliott?
Come out and vote in person. If you can't, try to be a vote in person and not through the mail.
Vote.
Why?
Because it's,
Because you come see me, Chris. I'm working the elections.
Are you working it?
I am.
Oh, really?
I will, I will send you a video that explains why. They'll do a lot better job than I can tell you.
So our county clerk is just not your group pick? Is that what you're saying?
No, not at all.
Ah? Vote any way you want, you vote, that's all. Vote, vote, vote.
I couldn't either.
Again, Devin has busted her butt. Getting ready for this, so.
Well, I'm not, I haven't,
If I came in and vote.
That disrespected me.
No, not at all.
Absolutely.
Both sides have, have you used scare tactics on this? I'm sorry. So vote wherever way you're comfortable, but you're not offending me. And whatever you're saying, there's, everything's out there. All options.
Come in there with a mask, just hacking on people.
Don't do that.
Well,
I'm not, I'm not.
I'll escort him out the door myself.
I won't do it.
You're still gonna be technically on council.
And only end of,
Yeah, you will. You just have to be respectable for a few more weeks.
I like that.
After that, what do you do?
I'm a fence robber.
Yeah. Fence robbers, training wheels, whatever.
Why are you starting out? Not a quitter. Let's see it to the end then. All right, yeah. And just vote.
The best way to count is to vote.
Yeah.
And I encourage everybody to take the time and make your voices be heard. It is very important. You never know when one vote will make the difference. We can cite numerous cases for it. When one vote is made, then it certainly matters. Please do come on and vote. Any other council discussion and observations? And we'll move to agenda items for the next meeting. We have discussion, possible amendment to council rules and procedures. We have,
You're gonna add mayor's appointments then?
Yes, we need to add mayor's appointments. So we dealt with Christmas fantasy, that comes off. But we'll need a report and possible approval of catering for the Christmas party. Let's see.
We did, we know a lot of those kinds of things.
You're just a Bluetooth speaker.
Oh, we have a possible report and discussion regarding a Bluetooth speaker for our virtual meetings.
And then that being on the list.
Anything else to be on the next agenda?
I'll just make sure to record all that.
Anything else for next agenda? If anything comes to your attention between now and our next meeting, which luckily us is three weeks out.
Oh, wow.
Has been early this month. The next meeting will be on Thursday, November 15. Chris, Genevieve and I, that will be our first lame duck session after the election.
Yeah.
Say that again? What did you just say?
That will be our first lame duck session.
We'll have two lame duck sessions.
Two days after the election.
Okay. I thought you said November 15.
November 5.
Okay.
If I said 15th, I was mistaken. It is November 5 and then November 19.
Okay.
And the new city council will convene for the first time and will have its organizational meeting on Thursday, December 3. With the new mayor in this chair and she's welcome.
New mayor.
With that, the time is now 8:39 in the hour journey.